You're watching City Channel 4, your window to our community.
I'd like to call to order the regular formal meeting of the Iowa City City Council, September 20th, 2016. Roll call.
Here. Oops.
Normally ready to go.
Who are you?
Normally ready to go.
Botchway.
Here.
Cole.
Here.
Dickens.
Here.
Mims.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Throgmorton.
Here. I'd like to welcome all of you to your city council meeting on this, what is this, the two days before the coming of fall and yet it's this brutally hot day? And seven days before somebody's birthday. I don't want to, I don't want to tell you who. Somebody near me on the right. Wow, pretty exciting. Anyhow, welcome to your council, city council meeting. Item two, proclamations. We have two proclamations for this evening. The first has to do with Food Rescue Week. So let me read this. Whereas Table-to-Table began in April 1996 and since then has distributed 15 million pounds of food, 12 and a half million meals, and made an impact on the community of over $72 million. And whereas Table-to-Table collects from over 40 donation sites and delivers to 36 agency sites at no fee for the services. And whereas Table-to-Table rescues a total of 1,762,674 pounds of food which provides 1,468,895 meals from those pounds in a year, helping to divert 881.3 tons from the landfill. And whereas Table-to-Table makes a monetary impact to recipient agencies of $4.23 million and a total monetary impact to the community agencies and those they serve of $8.46 million. And whereas there are only five paid staff members and over 100 dedicated volunteers that fill 68 slots every week to continue the work of Table-to-Table. Now therefore, I, James A. Throgmorton, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim the last week of September to be Food Rescue Week with Table-to-Table and urge all community members to join us in supporting this worthwhile and productive endeavor.
And here to accept the proclamation is Executive Director of Table-to-Table, Bob Anderlich.
I just wanted to express our thanks to the city council and everybody in Johnson County that really makes this work. It's truly a collaborative effort. If it wasn't for the donor agencies providing the food and the recipient agencies as a place to take that food and all those wonderful volunteers to physically do the lifting of that food, we couldn't do it. And so it's a testament to the city and to the county and to everyone involved, thank you so much.
Thank you, Bob. It's a very impressive set of statistics in that proclamation. Well done. Okay, and the second proclamation has to do with Constitution Week. Whereas September 17, 2016 marks the 229th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation. And whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17 through the 23rd as Constitution Week. And whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. Now therefore, I, James A. Throgmorton, Mayor of the City of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through the 23rd, 2016, to be Constitution Week in Iowa City and reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties.
Here to accept the proclamation is Kathy Shealy, representing the Pilgrim Chapter of the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution.
Maybe make one very quick comment. I had the pleasure of participating in Constitution Day at Kirkwood Community College several days ago. And it was a real treat to be able to do that. I spoke for maybe an hour to a group of about 60 students at Kirkwood. And, you know, it was really fun to do.
I would just interject for a second. This weekend I was in Washington DC and had the chance to see the original Constitution. And if anybody's in DC, let me tell you, the National Archives is an incredible place to go. Didn't begin to see everything that you could see in there, but to see the Declaration of Independence, the Constitution, and the Bill of Rights was pretty neat, so.
Absolutely. Okay, item three, consider adoption of the consent calendar as presented or amended.
Adoption.
Moved by Dickens. Seconded by Dickens. No, moved by Mims, seconded by Dickens. Discussion, hearing none, roll call.
Botchway.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Dickens.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Yes. Item four, community comment. This has to do with items not on the agenda. So if anybody would like to address any particular topic that's not on our formal meeting agenda, you can have, you have an opportunity to do so now. Please limit your comments to not more than five minutes. Roger, I hope you noticed that the podium's been adjusted for folks like you and Harry Olmstead and others.
Very nice. My name is Roger Knight and I would like to speak on, well, first of all, happy early birthday. And the sidewalk project for downtown looks great, but something needs to be done about the seating areas for, like in front of Moonraker. They're just, it looks great, but they are taking up way too much space. And then there's a sign, chalk sign board for their specials. There's a walkway nay big. Unfortunately, my wheelchair is nay big, so there's just a big, well, traffic jam every time anybody in a wheelchair or those who don't feel like they should have to get off their bike goes through this area. I don't know what can be done, but something needs to be done because everybody's on a go. We must go, and there's the problem with that. Second is an issue with unfortunately, the police department. Issues of the crime from over in the Mormon Trek area is going to continue to happen because when you call the police department, they don't ever come and they treat you like you are bothering them when you call for help on anything. So why would anybody call for help when you almost get a, you want help? Why? From dispatch? I just wanted to bring those two great things up. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Uh-oh, hold on. Oh, it's gone back up.
Yeah.
I thought it was moving backwards. Okay, anyone else? Don't be shy, Jake. Oh, somebody else is. Good evening.
My name is John Kirby and when I make my statement, I, you don't interreact. I just call, acquits, and then leave. And how do I find out what your response is?
It largely depends on what you say, yeah. So why don't you go ahead and speak to us?
All right, well, in 1971, the City of Iowa City Police Department set up a sting and they took a pinhole camera movie of a date with a girl that was named Jacqueline Burns. Unbeknownst to me, sometime later, she committed suicide. And the reason they got away with taking the pinhole camera movie because I was in ROTC, they waited for me to take my oath. And then they coordinated with the Army and I was essentially property of the government. And so they took this movie. They didn't use it, maybe because it was an illegal search and seizure, violation of multiple constitutional rights, I'm not sure. But I ran some ads in the Iowa City Public Citizen, or the, in the Press Citizen, and I got the obituary. Does anyone want to look at the obituary?
I don't think we're prepared to actually look at it, but why don't you go ahead and say whatever, whatever else you wanted to say?
Okay, so thanks to the internet, this is a sold-out show every night. In 71, it was illegal to be homosexual or a lesbian. I just happened to back into a tableful and they thought that they would probably get some fun and make me look foolish. The result was the death. It was not my idea to have a date. This was City of Iowa City Police Department. Because she was a confidential informant, it makes it even worse. So I think I'm entitled to a copy of that movie. Can you tell me why I'm not entitled to a copy of that movie?
No, I can't, but I could ask our city manager to look into this and see if you can learn some more details and if there's some way we could respond, Jeff.
Sure.
We rely very heavily on our city manager and the staff that is employed by the city manager and-
Very gracious, thank you. If you have trouble finding the movie, does anybody on the city council not know Mark Moan? Because he could provide a copy of the movie, I think, based on his hostility towards me on several occasions. So it's out there and it's public. And I think I'm entitled to as much as the general population as far as seeing me in the buff in a date 45 years ago. How do I get in touch with you?
If you can leave your contact information on the sign-in sheet, we'll follow up with you.
You're the city manager?
Yes.
All right. Where's the contact thing here?
Is there a binder there with a name? Is there-
Do you have a business card I could call you in a week?
I don't on me, but if you just want to have a seat here, I'll get you my information.
Okay, so did we get the, his name?
He's gonna-
He is.
John Kirby, yes, we have his name, yes.
All right, good deal. Okay, Jake, good evening, again.
Hi. Bear with me as I go through this. Jacob Simpson, I'm from the University of Iowa Student Government. During tonight's work session, the draft Affordable Housing Action Plan was discussed. I raised concerns with the plan, including our hesitation regarding the recommendation to exempt the downtown and the university impact area from the affordable housing location model. Other points of the plan have a potential to affect student housing, specifically the recommendation to review the multifamily design standards and the recommendation to develop more tax abatements. These recommendations have a direct impact on student housing, but it is an oversight to think that the other recommendations or any development policy do not have an effect on student housing. They are not just interconnected, they are interdependent and inter-reliant. So to speak of one without the others in mind leaves us in the sort of ignorance that allows for long-term negative consequences. My comments to follow are not limited to the Affordable Housing Action Plan, they are relevant to past policy discussions and those of the future. In this room and in the community, there is and has been a disregard for the university student when discussing housing policy. For example, this summer, support for an innovative development in downtown was denied in part for the possibility that students may have been able to become residents. Additionally, we can look back to 2012 when the city council passed an ordinance that restricted to three, the maximum number of bedrooms in high-density multifamily developments. Past studies intended to research the housing situation in Iowa City effectively left out student housing as an interest. In discussions about affordable housing by the city council and city staff, the mentions of students is largely void. When community members speak at this podium, they express disappointment in the concentration of students near downtown. From the students' viewpoint, this kind of talk in action is too prevalent for comfort. I read ordinances that cite student housing demand as a barrier to demographically diverse populations. The reasoning makes sense. Multifamily developments built for students rather than families are consumed by students rather than families. And this reasoning reveals the misnomer that continues to puzzle me. Multifamily developments in the university impact area are not intended for families, they are intended for students. I think of the misnomer as a symbolic representation of our city code not being equipped to handle the special, the special housing demands of a city that is home to a world-class university. We must recognize student demand is not going away and it is a faulty solution to implement blanket policies in the university impact area that treat student housing as multifamily housing. We need pro-development policies and we need buildings with higher densities and greater height. There also seems to be a derisive sentiment that student housing demand is a burden, that Iowa City would be better off without students, that students are not residents of the community. We can agree that Iowa City and the university could not exist with their same phenomenal identities if they never existed together. And the students are as much the university as the faculty and staff. And I would argue the students are actually the necessary component. Without students, the university would better resemble a private research firm. And with regard to the university's benefits to the community, I will focus on finances. In 2015, students contributed $377.8 million in tuition and fees to the university and the contribution rises every year. Portions of the money are given to community organizations, including the Iowa City Downtown District, the Johnson County Crisis Center, and the Rape Victim Advocacy Program. Students bring hundreds of thousands of dollars to the local economy every semester. You know the long list of the university's contributions to the community better than I do, but that does not diminish my resolve in the belief that students significantly benefit Iowa City in a way that is incongruent with how we are treated in housing policy. In addition, to think that students can afford the housing prices in this market is a false assumption. The greatest annual expense for the undergraduate at the university is room and board, with $9,728 being spent on average. And for context, that expense is 20% greater than the annual expense of tuition and fees. In 2015, of the undergraduates who graduated, 56% graduated with debt. And the average debt load was $27,415. It is hard for me to believe that the 25% of each freshman class who do not reach graduation day do not drop out in large part because of inability to pay for living in Iowa City. And the people who drop out are not white affluent males from the Chicago suburbs. They are typically underrepresented minorities, first-generation students, and from backgrounds of low socioeconomic status. This loss of opportunity is surely on the university to solve, but it cannot be solved solely by the university. Iowa City must recognize its role in the bigger picture. The 25% need help. To restate my previous point, the city code must accommodate and encourage housing development for students. Concern for students must be in housing policy discussions alongside all other concerns. There is no way to serve the citizens of Iowa City better. I appreciate, I appreciate your attention to these issues.
Thank you, Jake. No, we don't get into back and forth, but I would like to say I'd be happy to meet with you, Jake, and talk about your concerns in detail. And if any other city council member would like to join me, that would be pleasing.
No back and forth, I just wondered if we can get the speech which you just read. Yeah.
Okay, anybody else care to speak during this public discussion period? Seeing no one, I'm going to turn to item five, planning and zoning matters. Item 5A, East Side Mixed Use Form-Based Code, ordinance amending Title 14, zoning to establish form-based zoning standards for the East Side Mixed Use Zone and to clarify and refine certain provisions that apply downtown and in the Riverfront Crossings District. Second consideration, staff has suggested we waive second, or give second, uh, waived giving-
Expedited action.
Yeah, expedited, thank you. Expedited action.
I move that the rule requiring the ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed, be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Dickens. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
Cole.
Yes.
Dickens.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throgmorton.
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Move that the ordinance be finally adopted at this time.
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Botchway. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
Dickens.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throgmorton.
Yes.
Botchway.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0. Item 5B, rezoning to East Side Mixed Use EMU. Ordinance rezoning multiple properties encompassing portions of the 500 blocks of Iowa Avenue, College Street, Washington Street, and Burlington Street from Central Business Support, CB5, Central Business Service, CB2, and Neighborhood Stabilization Residential, RNS20, to East Side Mixed Use EMU. Second consideration, again, there's been requests for expedited action.
I move that the rule requiring the ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed, be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Botchway. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
Mims.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throgmorton.
Yes.
Botchway.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Dickens.
Yes.
Motion, I'm sorry, motion carries 7-0.
Move that the ordinance be finally adopted at this time.
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Botchway. Discussion. Roll call.
Taylor.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throgmorton.
Yes.
Botchway.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Dickens.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0. Item six, amending the FY 2017 budget. Resolution amending the FY 2017 operating budget. I'm going to open the public hearing. Dennis, did you plan to speak or think it's not necessary? Would you come up? I think I want to ask you one question just for the record. I see that our revenue balance, our revenue balance decreases from basically $129 million in the adopted budget to basically $72 million in the amended one. Is there anything in this decrease that should bother us?
It's primarily the care forward of capital project funds from one year to the next. So a lot of it is a spend down of bond proceeds and other funds that already been appropriated for use that weren't spent prior to the year end. So there's no increases in taxes, there's no decrease in fund balance beyond what our reservations require.
Okay, good deal, thank you. Would anybody else like to ask any questions of Dennis?
Appreciate it.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Anybody else care to address this topic? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Move resolution. Second.
Moved by Botchway, seconded by Dickens. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throgmorton.
Yes.
Botchway.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Dickens.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0. Item seven, Hebo Avenue Improvements. Resolution declaring the city's intent to fund the final design and acquire property for the Hebo Avenue Improvements Project. I'll open the public hearing. Anybody care to address this topic? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing.
Move resolution. Second.
Moved by Botchway, seconded by Dickens. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
Throgmorton.
Yes.
Botchway.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Dickens.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0. Item eight, Human Rights Amendment. Ordinance amending Title II of the city code entitled "Human Rights" to remove the references to housing accommodation, update references to men and women, and clarify time periods. This is first consideration.
Move first consideration.
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Botchway. Discussion. Stephanie here. Stephanie, did you intend to address this at all? Yeah, I think it's, we don't really need to hear anything, right? It's pretty straightforward, right? Okay, thanks. All right, so anybody else want to address the topic as briefly as Stephanie did? Okay. Roll call.
Botchway.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Dickens.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throgmorton.
Yes. Motion carries 7-0. Item nine, Under-21 Exceptions Certificate Revocations. Ordinance amending Title IV, Alcoholic Beverages. Chapter V, Prohibitions and Restrictions. Section VIII, Persons Under the Legal Age in Licensed or Permitted Establishments. Subsection B, Paragraph B, referencing the city's Under-21 law, to shorten the review and revocation periods for compliance check failures for holders of exception certificates. This is second consideration.
Move second consideration.
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Botchway. Discussion.
Just as a reminder to the council, the next Partnership for Alcohol Safety meeting is this Thursday and I'll be reviewing this ordinance with that group and I'll report back to you with any feedback that they share.
I guess I'd just like to know, I haven't heard any concerns from any constituencies, constituencies. Have you heard any feedback in terms of this, this particular ordinance? It seems relatively quiet given this issue is my impression.
The only feedback I have are from businesses with an interest in the change, so those that have been impacted by the existing regulations. And as you'd expect, they support the change.
Okay.
I will say, I mean, since you asked a question, I was going to stay somewhat mum on the topic. I have received some feedback, it was apparent actually, that in some relation to this, as far as them being very upset, asking for the mayor, and I tried to tell them that I was not, and so I was trying to get your personal line as quickly as possible, just joking, but, um, but spent some time with them, talking to them during a conference I was at. They were, they were very congratulatory of our police department and the work that they did to stop their daughter from potentially, you know, she was driving under influence, but stopping from getting on the highway because the individual was from Co-College, but were, was very upset, I wouldn't say necessarily at our current regu, or at our regulations, but wanting to know more answers about the regulations, why, you know, she was given so much alcohol and allowed to leave and allowed to drive and some of those other things. Takes full responsibility from his daughter's standpoint, which was clear, but really, you know, wanted to know what council was doing to address some of the situations. Again, I don't necessarily know that it speaks directly to this because I know we talked, I mean, the, the bar in question is not necessarily along the same lines, but, you know, again, it does give me pause as I was thinking about this and mentioning this particular ordinance coming before us today and, you know, obviously talking about it going before the review council at the university and then coming back before us for a third consideration, that, you know, it is important. I mean, we might not hear some of the things from, from people dealing with different issues in relation to, you know, I would say abuse of alcohol or whatever the case may be from DUI perspective, but, you know, I don't know whether or not people would really have this on their radar from a public standpoint, but it's just something that made me think or gave me pause. And again, I'm still not necessarily reserving my vote, but still wanting to hear exactly what from the, that review council has to say in regards to this particular ordinance. But again, it wasn't in particular about establishments, I think, are speaking to this ordinance, but I just wanted to say there was some feedback and, you know, cause for concern.
Anyone else? Hearing none, roll call.
Cole.
Yes.
Dickens.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throgmorton.
Yes.
Botchway.
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0. Item 10, Farmers Market Vendors. Ordinance amending Title 10 of the city code entitled "Use of Public Ways and Property." Chapter 11 entitled "Farmers Market." Chapter XI entitled "Farmers' Market", to require that the rules address vendor selection and to eliminate the requirement that growing vendors provide substantially different foods. This is second consideration, and there's been a request for expedited action.
I move that the rule requiring the ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed, to be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Second.
Moved by ma'am, seconded by Batsway. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
Dickens?
Yes.
Ma'ams?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Batsway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Dickens?
Yes.
Ma'ams?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Batsway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Dickens?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero. Item eleven, announcement of vacancies. We have a previously announced vacancy on the Human Rights Commission to fill an unexpired term plus a three-year term upon appointment. And we have one vacancy to fill an unexpired term plus a three-year term upon appointment. In other words, two different terms, oh, God, two different vacancies on the Human Rights Commission to fill unexpired terms plus a three-year term upon appointment. Those applications for those positions must be received by 5:00 PM Wednesday, September 28th of this year. We have four other vacancies, two on the, one on the Airport Zoning Commission. It's a vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment. Two vacancies on the Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment to fill unexpired terms upon appointment. And one vacancy for a Jefferson Street representative on the Historic Preservation Commission to fill a three-year term. Applications for those commissions must be received by 5:00 PM Wednesday, October 12th, 2016. And then there are several new announcements. We have one vacancy to fill a five-year term on the Board of Appeals, one vacancy to fill a five-year term on the Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a three-year term on the Human Rights Commission, two vacancies to fill four-year terms on the Parks and Recreation Commission, two vacancies to fill three-year terms on the Public Art Advisory Committee, two vacancies to fill three-year terms on the Senior Center Commission, and one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment on the Telecommunications Commission. Applications for those positions must be received by 5:00 PM Wednesday, October 26th.
Motion to accept correspondence.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Batsway, seconded by ma'am. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right. Item thirteen, city council information. Why don't we start with Rockne?
I went to the City High West football game last Friday night, and I just want to commend all the student athletes that played. I was very impressed with the level of competition. I was just very pleased and very proud to be part of a community where there was such a well-played game. So it was quite an experience. So that's all I have.
I was lucky enough to attend the free concert at Hancher this last Friday night with Preservation Jazz Band and Trombone Shorty. If you were able to get there, there was between 3,000 and 5,000 people. We walked across the bridge with a family from, drove down from north of Davenport just to see this concert, and the fact that it was free shows Hancher is back.
It is definitely back.
Well, Jim and I participated in the 30 that we discussed at the prior council meeting. It wasn't heavily attended at first, but I thought we had a good conversation with the community. I did not necessarily participate in the rest of the 30 hours. That was a part of it. They went all night and some of the other things, but I thought it was a good step in the right direction. And as far as some other things coming up, obviously the cyclocross event that I'll leave to you to bring up, and then also Brew Fest, which I normally see Terry at, so I'll be interested to see some of the counselors at as well. Again, I see Terry from afar. I'm not necessarily participating in activities, but it was good. It's good, so good time.
I do.
A couple of things. Kingsley and I both participated in the United Way Food Packaging event. It was United Way's kind of kickoff for the year. It was an absolutely great event. They had such a huge response for their call for volunteers. It was supposed to be a two-hour event. We were packaging oatmeal breakfast. It had oatmeal and apples and soy protein powder in it as well as, I think, seasonings. We had very specific techniques of putting all this stuff together and making sure it was all done right. And of course, Kingsley made sure he got his picture taken. But they, the minimum, yeah, the minimum that they can do is 20,000 meals with this company, and so they didn't want to, you know, kind of bite off more than they thought they could chew the first time, so they did 20,000. We were done in an hour and 15 minutes. By the time the second shift came, some of the employers had a lot of employees volunteering, and so they were sending them in two shifts. A group was coming in at 9:00, another group was coming at 10:00. By the time the employees for the 10 o'clock shift got there, we were shutting lines down because we were running out of either oatmeal or the soy powder or whatever. So I think they are really looking at maybe doing more than the 20,000 next year, but it was a great event. Every single one of those meal packets will be used at one of the food pantries within Johnson or Washington County. So it was a great event, and just thank you to United Way for organizing it and for all the volunteers that came out. It was a lot of fun. It was hot as could be, hot and humid in that warehouse down Fairgrounds, but still. It was a great event. Last week, had the opportunity to participate in some of the UI Inspiration Week activities, went to the open house out at the driving simulator. If you've never been out there, give them a call. They do tours all the time. It is absolutely incredible what this university has here that is world-known and used for research. It was really interesting standing up on the platform, the main platform where they do this, and they've got the 360 basically visual, and you would swear that the platform was moving, but you were standing, it was not. It was very interesting. So got to see that. Rockne and I participated in the Neighborhood Council meeting about a week ago. Also, Jeff was there, thank goodness. Some technical questions that were, as Rockne, you mentioned in your email back to Jeff, was very nice to have a staff member, oh, Marsha Bolinger was there as well. But just lots of good questions from kind of leaders of some of our neighborhood organizations asking questions about what we're doing, suggestions of things they would like to have us do or consider. So it was a great event.
Maybe along those lines very quickly, the issue of short-term rentals came up, and I think maybe it'd be good just to remind the public that you do need a bed and breakfast permit, correct? So without getting into all the technical details, just to remind the public that you do have to have that in order to do the short-term rentals and participate in the tournament, so.
Thanks, thanks, Rockne. And just as I had mentioned briefly earlier with the proclamation on the Constitution, had the opportunity to spend the weekend in Washington, DC. And if people get the chance to go there, and I think some of it hit me really because of where we're at in the political spectrum this year, but to go to a lot of those memorials and read a lot of the quotes from people like John F. Kennedy, we actually went to a show at the Kennedy Center, which was great, saw Second City. So if you've ever seen them, great comedy act, they are fantastic. But quotes from John F. Kennedy, Franklin Delano Roosevelt, Martin Luther King, you know, at the various memorials, et cetera, was, one was very moving and very inspirational and to me just really, I mean, really drew a line in the sand when you look at our national politics and what a lot of these people stood for and commented on, and the importance of people working together. Social justice showed up in a number of the various quotes, but very, very interesting, very moving time to look at a lot of those memorials. And I have to say thank you to our National Park Service and our previous presidents, et cetera, that made sure, and Congress, that we've done some of these things and really recognize and support the history. And so it's a great time, so encourage people, if they ever have the opportunity, to go see those things.
Well, Jim and I went to Des Moines.
Almost as good.
Washington, DC, I guess, on some level, but we attended the Iowa League of Cities for an overnight, and it was really quite interesting. It was, you know, getting a sense of the landscape of Iowa in terms of meeting with representatives from cities across the state. You know, as these things always go, it was educational sessions, went to some on budget financing and TIF, repressed my desire to go to the park planning sessions and attend those instead. And then the networking, which was really, I think, I think most people, when all is said and done, it's the networking that takes place at these events that's the most important. And had an opportunity with Jim to have lunch with Frank County, which was, really enjoyed our conversation.
You mean the mayor of Des Moines?
The mayor of Des Moines since 2003, I believe.
He's in his fourth term.
Yeah, he's been mayor there for some time now. But what I kind of loved about the experience, also had lunch with Pam Thiel from the mayor of Dyserd, if I'm pronouncing it correctly.
Dyserd.
Dyserd.
Dyserd, population 1379. So it's south of Waterloo.